We're discussing the time down here. The Monday, December 4th, 2023 City of Vandelia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
All right, I need a motion to amend the agenda to include Resolution 23-R-82, a resolution approving an agreement with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Folick to amend the agenda to add Resolution 23-R-82. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Faris.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers. Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. Now, we have no approval of minutes, and that brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards. And I believe Mr. Went is going to introduce Public Works Technician Nick Davidson.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Davidson, I just ask you to go ahead and stand up. I present to you Nick Davidson. He started as a full-time public works technician on the 16th of November. Prior to that, he was a seasonal with us, and so he's been on the department for a little bit. He had about 12 years at Kettering Tree Service and had worked at Phillips Ready Mix Concrete as a driver as well. He's got his Class A CDL, and he's a resident of Dayton, and he's getting along just great down there. And so he's prepared a 45-minute speech for you, and so I'm glad to... Just kidding. Nick, thanks a lot, and welcome onboard. We're really glad to have you in the full-time ranks.
All right, welcome.
Thank you.
And also, you don't have to hang out, even though we're going to do a lot of really great stuff here. Mayor, I apologize. On the agenda, there's a proclamation for Councilmember Ayers, and I would just propose that we hold that until the next meeting. I apologize.
No problem. All right, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comments.
Evening. My name is Cindy Dugan. I live at 794 Waltham Way. This pertains to Ordinance 23-29. The anticipated spending will take place in 2024, and I believe that the new council members should have a vote on that 2024 business. So I respectfully request to have it tabled until after the first of the year. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right, we'll move on to the City Manager's Report where we have an information item.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The first thing I would like to do is congratulate Assistant City Manager Amber Holloway, who has accepted the position as the City Manager of West Carrollton. Her last day in the office officially is tomorrow, even though she'll be on leave for a period. And so this is her last council meeting this evening, and I would just say thank you and congratulations. You've done a great job as ACM. It's been a privilege and a pleasure to work with you. Congratulations to the team on the Christmas tree lighting and the holiday market that occurred yesterday. Also, I'd like to recognize Director Lighter and for the Auditor Estate Awards that they received last week from the Auditor Estate. They received awards with a distinction for reporting and finance. That's for the City of Vandelia, for Tri-Cities, and also Nawa. Also, last week, the My Vandelia magazine began to arrive at homes, and I'm pleased to report that last week, we had a very productive meeting with Representatives Plummer and Creach at the Tri-Cities wastewater treatment plant to discuss our $100 million project and our pursuit of several grants and capital budget funding for that. The other information, on December 20th, we'll be delivering the annual report slash calendar. And so that's Wednesday, December 20th. That's different, but that'll be shrink wrapped and ready to go, and the city will contribute to the Honor Society Scholarship Fund. Also, leaf collection officially stops on December 5th. However, we believe that the weather will permit us to make a couple extra passes for the next week or two to collect those leaves that are still falling. And with that, that concludes my information items. I would ask for your appointment if I may move on to action items. And I would just ask that council appoint Mr. Robert Wolf to the Board of Zoning Appeals. He submitted an application, and we had a meet and greet at the last council meeting. Mr. Wolf lives in Woodland Meadows and is a member of the Gulf Advisory Board. He's also got about four decades in business. And I will say, I was on with the city for about a week before my first meeting with Mr. Wolf, and he came to my office, and we discussed a whole bunch of issues that go all the way through the city. And I think in these last couple of years, I've appreciated the ability to sit down with him face-to-face and develop a good working relationship and discourse for his passion for a lot of our issues in our city. And so I think he'll be a positive member on the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I just ask for that appointment.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Wolf, if you could join me down front for the oath of office?
Mayor, would you like to take a vote for appointment?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping the gun here.
It'd be really awkward if it doesn't pass.
Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to appoint Mr. Robert Wolf to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Faris to appoint Mr. Robert Wolf to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Call the roll.
Councilmember Faris.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Robert Wolf, solemnly swear.
I, Robert Wolf, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties associated.
The duties associated.
With the position I am undertaking.
With the position that I am undertaking.
Congratulations. All right. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening. That being Resolution 23-R-77.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Quality Lawn Landscape and Fence, Inc. of Castown, Ohio, for the Sports Complex Ball Field Fence Replacement Project in an amount of $49,145.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Parks and Rec Department solicited proposals for a ball field fence replacement project at the Sports Complex. Four companies submitted proposals with Quality Lawn Landscape and Fence, Inc. of Castown, Ohio, providing the overall best proposal of $49,145. The proposal includes replacement of the backstop, sideline, and dugout fencing on Fields 9 and 10 at the Sports Complex with number nine gauge, black vinyl coated chain link fence fabric, and all necessary equipment, supplies, and labor to complete the project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 23-R-77 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Faris to approve Resolution 23-R-77 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Faris.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-78.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with NIRA Paving of Cincinnati, Ohio, for the municipal building parking lot maintenance project in the amount of $53,242.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Your Honor, the Parks and Rec Department solicited bids for a parking lot maintenance project at the municipal building. Four asphalt companies submitted bids with NIRA Paving of Cincinnati, Ohio, providing the overall lowest and best bid at $53,242. The proposal includes repairs, milling, paving, crack fill, and painting stripes on the parking lots at the municipal building, including all necessary equipment, supplies, and labor to complete the project. The capital improvement budget has $59,000 available for this project. Project has a completion date of approximately August 30th, 2024.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-78 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 23-R-78 as presented. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Faris.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes six zero. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-79.
Resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the continued contract with Flock Safety to install cameras and provide the means for Vandelia Division of Police to capture objective evidence and utilize machine learning to create and deliver unbiased investigative leads.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. In 2022, the city entered into an agreement with Flock Safety to install cameras and to provide the means for the Vandelia Division of Police to capture evidence. Flock Safety has proprietary devices and cloud-based software. Due to this proprietary software, I request that council waive the formal bidding process and allow the Division of Police to renew the hardware and software maintenance agreement with Flock in the amount of $27,500. The budget included $25,000 for this capital expenditure while evaluating one additional camera. The additional camera has been essential, and based on the testimony of Chief Alhouse later tonight, I would request the additional $2,500 be covered with unexpended funds from the new firearms capital purchase.
All right, can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 23-R-79.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 23-R-79 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Faris.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-80.
A resolution authorizing the execution of a memo of understanding and accepting the donation of certain real property to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The owner of three parcels of land located at the corner of Park Center Drive and Webster Street approached the city with interest in donating the land to the city at no cost. The request is for permission to enter into an MOU. Three parcels are zoned Office Industrial Park currently. They total 4.393 plus or minus acres. Considering the strategic location of these parcels, coupled with their adjacency to the existing city-owned properties, I recommend that we pursue the acquisition of the land subject to satisfactory completion of environmental and title work.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-80 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Faris and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Resolution 23-R-80 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Faris.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-81.
A resolution imposing a temporary moratorium on the acceptance, consideration, and/or granting of any zoning, occupancy, or other permits or applications relating to cultivators, processors, or retail dispensaries of adult-use cannabis within the City of Vandelia.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Your Honor, Ohio has recently passed Issue Two, an Act to Control and Regulate Adult-Use Cannabis, effective on December 7, 2023, which has legalized the use of cannabis for adults and established the Division of Cannabis Control. At this point, it is unclear how these regulations will affect the city. To fully comply with the newly implemented law and to determine the best course of action for the city, staff is proposing this moratorium to have time to review the regulations set by the Division of Cannabis Control regarding the issuance of permits and procedures for licensing of adult-use cannabis. This will assist the city to create reasonable regulations to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-81 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Faris to approve Resolution 23-R-81 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Faris.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes six zero. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-82.
Resolution approving an agreement with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a resolution to approve an agreement for the successor collective bargaining agreement with the Sargent's Bargaining Unit of the Ohio Patrolman Benevolence... Patrolmen's Benevolent Association.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 23-R-82.
Second.
Who made the second?
I did.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 23-R-82 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Faris.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. We have Ordinance 23-29 in its first reading.
An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 208 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Vandelia, Ohio.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance was brought before the City Council for consideration at the Spring Council Retreat on May 15th, 2023. It was subsequently brought to a study session in June 2023. It was tabled in a first reading in July. The amendments were considered by the City Council during the Fall Retreat on September 11th. The item was tabled at the November 6th, 2023 meeting, and it was presented to City Council for discussion at the November 20th study session. As proposed, the amendment to Codified Ordinance 208 would do the following. Permit informal bidding for purchases that are less than or equal to $25,000, while the current threshold is $10,000. Permit informal bidding for purchases after advising the City Council of purchases greater than $25,000 but less than $50,000, while the current threshold is $10,001 to $24,999. Permit formal bidding on purchases of $50,000 or more, while the current threshold is $25,000. As a note, the State of Ohio has increased the formal bidding threshold for statutory municipalities from $50,000 or greater to $75,000 or greater with annual escalators of 3%, subject to the approval by the Director of Commerce. This will also account for the role of public and private cooperative purchasing programs. It will reduce the requirement for waiving formal bidding by a affirmative vote from five council members to four council members. And it will also formally legislate and document the practice and affirm the authority of the city manager to make emergency purchases of more than $25,000 and less than or equal to $100,000 without prior notice to council or being authorized or directed by council as an emergency measure due to it being necessary, in the opinion of the city manager, to provide for the continued protection of the public peace, health, safety, welfare, and for reasons relating to the good order of the organization and maintaining continuity of operations. This language aligns with the emergency ordinance language that is used by the State of Ohio and this City Council for emergency legislation. Recent examples of emergency purchases that have been authorized by the city manager include, but are not limited to, purchases in response to the immediate remediation of the Christmas Day flood of the Justice Center to maintain continuity of services and prevent further loss, rooftop air conditioning units servicing the Police Dispatch Communication Center, temporary repairs for a sanitary sewer collapse, purchasing replacement pumps and equipment that would otherwise necessitate a shutdown and foregone revenues at the Aquatic Center or Castle Hills Pool, emergency repairs to fire apparatus, emergency roof repairs to prevent water infiltration above the basketball court at the Vandelia Rec Center, and just this weekend, a water heater that went out at Station 1 for the Division of Fire. Other potential emergency purposes that we hope that we never need but may include but not be limited to traditional public emergencies, emergency roadway or bridge deck repairs, natural disaster response, and purchases necessary in response to a mass casualty event or other unforeseen emergencies. This provision is meant to document the current and long-established practice of the city manager making these rare emergency purchases and then advising the City Council after the fact. This provision is meant to be used rarely and sparingly, and the provision is not meant and cannot be used to obviate appropriations, which are the responsibility of the legislative body. As the chief executive officer and public safety director of the City of Vandelia, the city manager is able to prudently and objectively identify the need for emergency purchases. This amendment will also establish by ordinance the guidance that the city manager shall advise the council of emergency purchases exceeding $25,000 and increase the threshold regarding the city manager's discretion of whether to require bid bonds for contracts from $25,000 to $50,000. The end.
The end. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 23-29 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance 23-29 in its first reading. Are there any comments from council?
The only comment I have and relates to the comments of Ms. Dugan is that we've worked real hard on this, and I feel that through all of those meetings, it's been a collaborative effort of the existing council. And we're able to amend this in January, February, March, should the pleasure of council be that there's a gaping hole somewhere that we've missed. And I feel that that protectionism is built into the legislative process. And so if we do indeed pass this tonight, I don't think it prejudices us to amend it or change it in the future. And so to get it off the plate, so to speak, I think it would... It probably is prudent to go ahead and vote on it.
Okay. I agree with Vice Mayor Lewis and his comments. Are there any other comments?
Yeah. Agree.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Faris.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. Next, we have Ordinance 23-31 in its first reading.
An ordinance amending the text of the Vandelia Zoning Code to include various updates and clarifications.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. This staff-initiated text amendment proposed amendments to several chapters of the zoning code. The proposed amendments clarify several processes within the code, introduce additional definitions, and update language. There was a presentation about this in the study session. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed amendments on November 28th, 2023, and recommended their approval five to zero.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-31, otherwise known as the Holloway Ordinance.
Second.
Get through me there for a second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Faris to approve Ordinance 23-31 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Faris.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. Next, we have Ordinance 23-32 in its first reading.
An ordinance amending Sections 884.062A, 884.062D, 884.062J, 884.091A1, 884.094, and 884.10C4 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Vandelia concerning required updates passed in Ohio House Bill 33 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. In the study session, Ms. Hewer gave a very good presentation on this and the required and mandated updates for House Bill 33. And so I won't belabor those, but her memo is included in the packet.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 23-32 in the first reading. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Resolution... Or I'm sorry, Ordinance 23-32 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Sorry, Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Faris.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes six zero. We have no ordinances in our second reading, nor do we have any emergency ordinances. And that brings us to reports from Boards and Commissions, where we have a variance request for 165 North Dixie Drive. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I just wanted to double-check something real quick. 165 North Dixie Drive, this is Advantage Plumbing and Drain Solutions. Enclosed in the packet is a memorandum from Mr. Graham wherein the applicant, Mr. Colby Harris, on behalf of Advantage Plumbing and Drain Solutions, has requested a variance to forego the perimeter landscaping requirement for the property located at 165 North Dixie Drive. The purpose of the request is to have no perimeter landscaping. There are some hardships that are associated with this, and they have done a good job trying to meet our code, but it's not possible with the utilities, and it's in the notes. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted four to zero to recommend approval of this variance.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the variance at 165 North Dixie Drive.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Faris and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve the variance request at 165 North Dixie Drive as presented. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. Next we have the Vandelia Arts Council Meeting Minutes of October 17th along with the Civil Service Meeting Minutes of November 9th and the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of November 14th. Are there any comments? And then they stand approved, and that brings us to council comments, and we'll begin this evening with Mr. McDonald.
I just wish to, wish Amber well in her new endeavors.
Thank you. Mr. Wett.
Your Honor, I would just take a moment, I would just take a moment to compliment Communications Manager Rich Hopkins. I really think that the quality of the publications that we've been getting out has been very top-tier, especially with the My Vandelia Magazine, and pretty quickly here we'll have the, our popular annual financial report, and so I think there's been a lot of progress made, and I'm really proud of him for that. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Ayers.
I'd just like to mention also to Amber, it's been a pleasure working with you over the last couple of years, and we're going to hate to see you go, but it's a great opportunity, so good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fars.
Just want to say congratulations to the Finance Department, to Ms. Leiter for their awards, and congratulations to Amber. I think everybody knows we're sad to see you go, but that's a great opportunity. We'll watch for your future projects, so we'll keep an eye on you. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Folick.
First, I just had a question for the city manager. Will, you mentioned the leaf pickup being extended. Is that by zone again, or is it just something that is going to be just randomly, I mean, and is that going to be pushed out to residents?
We'll do a little push on social media as well.
Okay, thank you. If I could first make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Woods from both meetings this evening.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to excuse Councilwoman, Councilwoman Woods from all of this evening's meetings. Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries six zero.
And I just want to echo the congratulations to the Finance Department for their recognition in the Auditor of State's awards. I think it's important to realize that not, that's not only for city finances, but we are the financial agent for both the Tri-Cities and Nawa, so it's a tremendous honor that they continue to get that recognition every year for all three fiscal operations. And then also to Ms. Holloway, I was on Planning Commission when Amber started as our city planner, and I remember her, our first meeting when she started, I, I think, and she worked in the private sector right before the coming of Vandelia, so I immediately just noticed that even, even though she was younger, her professionalism was at a very high level, and I thought, you know, during the time that she was city planner and when she was elevated to the Assistant City Manager position, I had no doubt that she was going to exceed, succeed and become a city manager in a relatively short period of time. So congratulations. West Carrollton's definitely getting a good one, and we look forward to your success. Just don't outshine us, your success at West Carrollton.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Lewis, I'm sorry, Councilman Blakeslee, I've made enough mistakes tonight.
Echo everything about the Finance Department. Congratulations on the award, and there's, we see why we get the award because the stellar work that you do, and we just really appreciate everything that you do for us, and it's nice to be noticed among the profession and throughout the state. And then also, Amber, we'll definitely miss you. Words, I'll echo everything else. There isn't anything else I know what to say, other than we'll miss you, maybe cry a few tears, but we'll eventually get over, but we're really proud of you and, and, you know, don't want to outshine us, as you said, but appreciate all your work too on the VDC, all your professionalism and knowledge and also your wisdom to help guide us in some of those decisions, so good luck, much luck to you on your new adventure. And then the tree lighting this weekend was great, as always, and when we were leaving that, we're trying to remember how many years that has been. I want to say like 12, 13. I think Rich said something last night, but I think the Grinch interjected in there and couldn't quite hear what, what was said, but that's always great, and it was a great turnout, good weather, so it's always a pleasure to see the community come out and enjoy that holiday festive, so that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lewis.
I don't wish to be redundant, but I think it is important to note with the, with the Finance Awards for reporting that very few of the municipalities in Ohio achieved that award, and not only has our Finance Department gotten it this year, but like 20 consecutive years or more. I know it's a notable period of time, and that is deserving of congratulations. And then secondly, certainly I agree with all of the comments in regard to Amber Holloway, but I want to thank her. In her time here, I've learned a lot from her and certainly her professionalism. I hope it's worn off on me a little bit, and I want to thank you very much for the time you've served here.
Thank you. Again, not to be redundant, but again, I would like to congratulate our Finance Department and all the hard work that goes on in that department. I know your council is very proud of all the work that you've done and you've accomplished in the year after year after year of receiving the awards. I mean, it's truly a testament that you're, you're doing a great job for the residents of Vandelia, and we really appreciate that. And Ms. Amber, I was on the BZA when, when you came, and there had been a few people serving in the Planning Department prior to you coming, and when you, that first meeting, you showed up, I thought, she's going to make it, and the BZA was very impressed with you, and we knew we were in good hands, and I'm thankful that we've been able to keep you this long, and, you know, wish you the best of luck in West Carrollton. I know you're going to be a, you're going to do great things there. You're a shining star, and you've got our support. So again, thanks and congratulations. And lastly, I want to thank Ms. Angela Swartz for these agendas that you do for me to keep me on track. Now, I know I made a mess out of it tonight, but you did a good job, but she always does such a great job of telling me when we're going to deviate from the norm, you know, puts it in red and tells me exactly what to say, so it makes it look like I really got this under control, but I couldn't do it without you, Ms. Swartz, and I really appreciate it. All right, and that's all I have. Meeting adjourned.